I really want to be that close to DC. Let the last. Just you know with the delay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Our first meeting of the year. Hopefully, everyone had a wonderful holiday season and the end of 2024. We're missing one of our council members who's gone into the weather. And I believe hopefully he's taking care of himself tonight. Jerry sent him a note earlier and hopefully he'll be feeling better by Thursday. If not, we'll see him next month. Drive him on, send him a note, well wishes. But we'll go ahead and get started. Our call meeting in order. Any adjustments to the agenda by council?
Dad?
During closed session, we would like to add the legal, and I apologize, I don't have the number off the top of my hand. One of the council members would like to ask questions about a pending legal matter. So we would like to add under the closed session consult with an attorney, 143-318.1183.
Any other? Not, I'll ask for a motion to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting with the addition of the consultation of an attorney in a closed session, 143-318.1183.
You make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Any other question or comment? None, although in very high.
Hi.
The opposition, okay, none, motion passes. We'll start with our general business and we'll start with comments from council and start with Mr. Now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone and our prayers and thoughts are with the people of New Orleans, Louisiana for the terrorist tragedy that happened down there on New Year's Eve. On a lighter note, but on a note involving our town, I wasn't at the December meeting and I spoke with our town manager and he said we didn't discuss it. Kind of glad we didn't because I had a lot of thoughts and comments about the horse fair at the Iredell County Fairgrounds. Very unhappy about what transpires at the horse show, not so much the horse show, but the traffic conditions. The total disregard of no parking, parking trailers, parking cars, parking trucks everywhere in the town of Troutman with no regard for rules, regulations, parking, you name it. Very unhappy with the county commissioners on how they handled our town manager's questions and comments. And enough is enough. They need to either step up to the plate and enforce the rules, the regulations. That was another thing, because it's been so long, Thanksgiving to now, 1:30 in the morning, we're still on the PA system having a horse auction. I don't think we should have public address systems working in the town of Troutman where our ordinances and our UDOs at 1:30 in the morning. So we have one coming up, I think in April. I may be wrong, it could be March. I think we should totally enforce our UDOs, our traffic policies and everything else that goes along with that. I don't know what the rest of the council agrees with me or disagrees with me. We don't really, I don't think we take in, we don't get any money from that except for what our businesses get from taxes. Okay, I mean, we don't really have a say whether or not they can use the fairgrounds for that, but we should enforce all our rules and policies and whatnot.
Is there, again, there's not a requirement around approval, if you will, other than special events?
There is. The town has a requirement, any gathering of 50 people or more has to have a permit. And they have to go through the police chief for one, depending on what the event is to have input, and then the rest of town staff. Since this incident, we as staff have talked and if and when we get the paperwork for the next one, our requirement is going to be additional hired officers to enforce the parking, no parking areas, and also for them to have a parking plan in place that they supervise and do that. The thing that I've found disappointing was they have a new director over the department who was not there to even see what the issues are or will be that's under his or her purview. And when I say his or hers, that's because I don't know who it is. They've never come and introduced themselves to us. But we, through the process, will absolutely require that they have a parking plan in place before we sign off on the permits of them having another event. My fear is at least a couple of the commissioners, one in particular, will use our comments here as a negative to say, see, Troutman's not working with us. And that's not the case at all. We want to have any event here, but yet somebody at the county be responsible for the events when they rent out the facility. Because we have a permit system in place, it's not our place to enforce the conduct and the activities that is off-site because they have an event on-site. So it's one of those situations, to me, communications will go a long way to resolve it and listing out what the expectations are of whatever event is rented there. But in this situation, we had several businesses contact us because their parking lots were being used, even though there was signage in place that said customers only. They were blocking fire code, which falls under the county's purview of people being able to access ingress or egress from these public businesses. But it's, as Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilman Now said, it's almost kind of been a deaf ear and a couple shouting that it was not their responsibility to do. Or to take care of.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, Commissioner Howell was very receptive when our town manager called, told, I'd like to apologize to say that it was deaf ears on all the county commissioners. Gene was very receptive, contacted our town manager, says, hey, we'll be responsible if there's damage or whatnot. So I'm not blaming all the county commissioners, but there are definitely deaf ears with the exception of Commissioner Howell.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jerzinski?
Just like to give a shout out for the town and the employees for putting on a great Christmas event. The tree lighting, the 5K, the parade, everything that's been going on. And also, I would like to address maybe the general public and the way that complaints are brought to us as a board. I've noticed that it seems like some of them reach out more individually to pick off the ones to sign on with their problems or with the concerns they have. I would like to see them to copy us all on the same email so that we can unilaterally view the information and the complaints and be in unison instead of trying to play to one charge or another. I think there are a couple, I definitely do welcome the complaints and the concerns being emailed to us and brought to our attention, but just being done in a uniform manner, either through collectively emailing the entire council or coming into our public meetings and addressing the council during public comments.
You bring up another, just thought, there are some, I think some councils that have a separate like email box that would go out to everybody. I don't know if that's something we can consider in the future, just to have a, you know, one single box that they could send their complaints to and we would all have an opportunity to see that.
We certainly can do that. The one concern I would like to mention to you all to consider is even though we can communicate with one another in a group chat, we have to be careful in doing town business that way. So if a citizen reached out the form that some do use, as you said, and then if two or three of you all responded as to what you thought the town should do or take action on, that actually is conducting town business out of purview of the public. So we certainly can, but then they would need to be designated to respond instead of multiple people responding, which sometimes is great, but then certain citizens may feel like, well, Councilman Harris, Council Lady Harris is the only one responded, not understanding why the rest can't. So if we do that format, absolutely, we need to also have part of there is an explanation from us and an auto response that says, hey, somebody will contact you, but because of meetings laws, you will only get one member. We can try to do that with our IT people to accomplish what I think you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's how it's generally been handled. It's just if there's an auto response to it, then we can either address it, you know, via response back or address it at the meeting one way or the other, but we could talk about that.
Yes, sir. Did you copy all that?
Yes, sir.
Just make notes and give me a report.
Anything else, Mr. Jerzinski? Mr. Enkle?
Well, as does the others, I wish everyone, hope everyone had a nice Christmas, Happy New Year. Went by too fast. Starting off a new year, I just can't believe 2024 is already behind us. It seems like we just got started with 2024, but here we are, here in Councilman Now. You know, it's very well said. Unfortunately, it's not the first time, but we have to repeat it. And we're going to have to get to a point to where it'd be nice, but then you got, kind of like handling sometimes our zoning enforcement officer has to do. You start off with the, you know, with the tariff and if that doesn't do any good, then you have to get a little bit more serious. And we may be at that point. And I would recommend, you know, my thinking is that perhaps, you know, certain folks here on the council get with the county manager and then just tell them, this is how it is. You represent the council more than just two or three people talking, that you will abide or we will shut you down. And you can plan all you want, but if you don't go by rules, we'll shut it down. And it won't be allowed until such time as you do. Fill out proper forms, adhere to the proper guidance and the rules that we have laid out in our ordinances. You know, I don't know what else to say. You know, you play nice, play nice, play nice, but after a while, you have to get serious with some people. And unfortunately, maybe there's some folks think that, you know, we're to be ignored and if that's their feeling, then we need to get serious and make sure that we are taken seriously. As far as what Councilman Jerzinski said, I agree. You know, we've all probably been on the receiving line where we certainly want to be informed or contacted on a concern of a citizen and the rest of us are like, what? Never, never the other's problem and so forth. And I agree that everyone should be informed, you know, under most circumstances. Me, when I get one, I try to inform, you know, if it's something that I feel like that's being done to, I try to leave it with the mayor, you know, go with at least one person to look at this and see what you think. And, you know, perhaps, you know, something can be handled by just the mayor or the mayor of town manager or by all of us to get us all involved. But it is something that in most cases, I agree, we need all to be included in it, whether we respond or not. We need to be aware of it so that we're not caught by surprise when we're out in public and someone asks us about it. Sorry to hear that one of our members is sick and we'll certainly send him one. Get well email and I hope he's with us Thursday night. I'm just trying to think if there's anything else. I believe I have covered it all. I know I just kind of reviewed. It was just my comments on what I've heard so far.
Ms. Harris?
Happy New Year, everyone. I too would like to commend our staff and everyone on the parade, the decorations, and I could not leave this meeting without talking about the elf. That was a hit. And Emily doesn't want to take credit for it, but I just wanted to say that we, the town, I know I do, our council probably does too, so appreciative of the joy that it brought the whole town and just reading comments. Oh, I know you don't read the comments, but I read almost every comment from people. If I'm going to read something, I want to read the positive stuff. So people were just, they loved it. Of course, we had the one person who didn't love it, but it was just great to see. So thank you for allowing that to happen, Doug, and thank you to Emily and staff for all who made that happen. And last thing, I know that Andrew is going to go over some intersection updates later, but I wanted to see if I can get an update on Tally Street.
I was planning on opening up for questions after that. Do you want to wait till then?
I can, absolutely.
Okay, or I can get into it now, but I do have an update on that one.
Okay, perfect. I can wait then. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, Ms. Harris? Again, I appreciate all the comments and concerns shared by council. I think there is some conversations that probably need to be had. I would say Ron and I can kind of lead that conversation with the county a bit more around the fairgrounds. I don't know that we're at a point to shut it down, I think, but we need to have some conversations and how do we move forward. And I think that's important. You know, we're in the county, they're in Troutman. We just need to figure out the best solution of how to move this forward. So again, I appreciate the comments on that.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for that. I just want to say, I'm not advocating that, but I'm saying that there's a point to where you, you know, it's kind of like a parent.
Absolutely.
There's a point to where you talk and then you gotta turn over the needs, but you're ready.
Symbolic. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I didn't want that to be the last comment. So, no, thank you for the clarification, I think. And gasoline poured on it, Mr. Jerzinski.
Just don't like the match.
Yeah, yeah. So again, as you said, thanks for everything that happened during the holidays. Very well done. I've never seen an elf that big, but I've never seen an elf, but it really was a lot of positive chatter. So thank you, as you said, to the staff for hosting that. And I think it even got more regional news play. I had some folks in Charlotte even ask me about it while I was in Charlotte during the holidays. So good stuff and, you know, hopefully everybody had a safe holiday season. So we'll get going here. I'll turn it over to Mr. Platt for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, thank you all for the comments that you made, positive or in consideration of moving forward in a relationship with the county. My only concern is certain people have maybe not done what they should have done, wanting us to say things that could be portrayed in the media as negative, because a couple commissioners have been very vocal that they do not want the fairgrounds to remain in the town of Troutman. And to me, I think this is just feeds them and that's one reason why they've not been more sincere in trying to make sure that events are done in a proper manner. Because even if they moved it to North Iredell, those neighbors are not going to be any happier than ours. And as you know, Mr. Mayor, from previous meetings we had, they kept telling us about our citizens, but yet they couldn't tell us any citizen that they had talked to of what they projected would be. And part of their thing was the noise and the timelines at nighttime. So by their permit, it should not have allowed PA systems at 1:30 in the morning, but that was not on our permit that we approved, but just simple discussions that they are not having, one, shows a lack of their ability to do the job, or two, they're trying to get us to say something so that they can tell everybody else, see, Troutman's not working with us. And I'm kind of tired of the childish games over that. Just say publicly what we mean and do something proactive or don't. Just as a staff suggestion, I would also like to echo you all's thoughts on the activities in December. To me, that's the month out of the year, all staff members and various, through various programs, gets to show off and show how prideful they are, one, to work here, but to welcome people to our community. And as you all said, the elf on the shelf was the biggest, talked about publicity-wise. A couple news stories, some out of state was done about something so simple and how much cheer it did cause for most. As Council Lady Harris said, she didn't say it this way, but I personally think we could pass out hundred dollar bills and we're still going to get complaints. But for the overall positive thoughts and moods and people driving from several counties or states away just so that they could try to find the elf, to me, showed exactly what Emily's intent was when she offered the program to me, saying, is this something that we could do? I certainly appreciate her making it something that worked and I appreciate each one of her staff members that helped facilitate it to make it work. But that's all I have at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Just two questions. Did Emily order up the fog?
That was awesome that morning, wasn't it? It's like, wow, how did you do that?
Yeah, yeah. All right, next item on the agenda is setting a date in time for the strategic planning retreat.
Typically, before you all decide a date, typically, we've done it a couple different ways. It has normally been late February. We did have one year to where we started in the morning, took a brief break and then went into pre-agenda discussions. I know one or two like that, but there was one or two that didn't because it made it for an extreme 14 or 15-hour day in that one particular year. Staff is of course willing to do whatever works for you all. And typically, we have started either at eight or 8:30 AM and we try to be through by 3:30 PM in that. And as a reminder, unless you all set something different you would like to see out of the strategic planning session, our goal is to basically have each department explain a little bit of where they were, but where they are now and what they see based off of various comments from the community and expertise in their fields of what we need to do to go into the future, not only for the upcoming year, but also a five-year plan, 10-year plan possibly.
I'm going to toss out a couple of dates just for folks to consider. February 19th.
What day is that?
February 19th.
Wednesday? Do what?
They're being expected to meet.
February 19th.
Sounds good to me. I can't speak for Jerry, though.
Yep.
I will have to, I have to look at my calendar at home. I can, I can all remember.
Here's the calendar.
I'm talking about mine. It's got a little.
I'm good for February 19th.
Okay, what about the 20th?
Just what day is it again?
That's a Thursday.
So if Wednesday works, would 20 be an overflow day?
Right.
Board of Adjustment.
That'll work too, for me.
So Bill, you said Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment is on the 20th at 3:00 PM.
If it were overflow day, we likely wouldn't go anywhere near that time.
Yeah, we probably would be done hopefully by then, by noon.
The 19th works for me.
And the 20th would be a morning, just overflow.
First for me.
Eight or nine till noon.
I had texted Jerry to see if he could.
The 19th, all day, 20th overflow.
Yeah.
All I can do is I'm a glad, look, I'll get home and text, text.
Okay.
Is this budget or strategic?
It's strategic.
Strategic, yeah. Question for both your calls.
So that's alternative date for now. If we need to change it, we will.
What comes, did you say on the 11th, 8:00?
Does 8 or 8:30 work better to for you all to start?
8:30. Breakfast starts at 8.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We will historically use one of the locals for our food. If there, I'm not asking you all to discuss publicly this evening, but if there is particular menu or things that you would like for us to do when it comes to the food, to shoot myself and Kim an email and we'll be happy to try to accomplish that. But typically, our breakfast is there's only one local non-franchise business that's open for breakfast. We typically order something from there, Cat's Patch, and then get lunch from one of the other places that's in town.
I do see, we have an issue. We've got the EDC and Bestor breakfast.
Ooh.
That morning.
On 19th?
Yeah. It's at 8, I believe, 8 to.
Which day is that?
That's that Wednesday.
That's usually over by 10.
Yeah. They blocked it for 8 to 9:30.
I'm sorry?
They blocked it for 8 to 9:30.
Yes, sir.
So if we started at 10?
I think it would be fine.
We need to leave a little early.
Yeah.
Still be fine.
Then our breakfast then, that day?
Yeah.
So that would likely definitely push us into Thursday?
Unless we stay later, another hour or so later.
Okay.
10 to 6.
We could say start time at 9:30, which should allow us to do what we need to do at the EDC meeting. And breakfast would be here for everybody else from 8:30. That way, we give you all a full hour if you wanted. And then start the meeting at 9:30 and then have lunch, y'all's choice, 12:30 or 1.
9:30 or 4:00 later.
And unless we get into a lot of questions, I really think we could still finish by four o'clock. And I'm not saying that you all shouldn't ask questions, because each one of the department heads, I think, do a pretty good job in the way they present the material. But it is time for you all to ask questions in case there's something that you think we should be planning or looking at that was not discussed.
Feel point for that head. So Mr. Enkle is going to check his calendar and we'll wait to hear back from Jerry.
Temporarily, you take the 19th Wednesday.
Correct.
What's our secondary choice if that doesn't work out? Is it just the following Monday or are we available to go to the 17th of February?
Yeah, it's the, Tuesday, the 17th. Is that a problem for folks?
Monday, the 17th.
That'd be a problem for me.
Sweet, Monday.
Monday, the 17th?
Yeah.
I'm out.
Okay, all right.
Traveling back from Daytona.
Yeah. I, I was, I was, I had a note on here, so I was trying to back it up. I knew where missing hour would be that weekend, so. That following week, I'll be in Raleigh, it's recession.
What about the Thursday and the Friday, if that's on?
Yeah, the twentieth and twenty-first. Is that bad for folks?
The twentieth, we have the three o'clock Board Adjustment, other than that, we don't have a conflict staff-wise. That's if, if the BO even needs to meet, and there's a heavier chance that they won't than there is that they will need to meet.
I think the last two or three have been canceled, right?
Yes, sir.
You don't have to twist my arm to cancel.
You what, Andy?
You don't have to twist my arm to cancel the meeting.
Well, you know, I'd just like to add a comment to that, that's kinda good news for some of the community that complains. Because if there's no Board of Adjustment, there's likely uh, no proposals for communities to be built and signings to be changed. And you know, the, the stay that they wanted on all of the construction is naturally happening.
So if we move to the twentieth, the twentieth from eight, move it back to eight, seven thirty breakfast, eight o'clock.
Okay.
And.
You know, obviously that takes it off y'all, you know, doing the EDC investor meeting early that previous morning, Wednesday morning, the twentieth. To me, even the twenty-first Friday, uh, general Fridays are good for me, I don't know about anybody else, but uh, twentieth or twenty-first or wherever. You guys are not pressed against the wall to get from eight point eight to one B.
Yeah.
And so forth.
So the twentieth, starting at seven thirty with breakfast?
Right.
Eight AM.
And I would say if, at what point, uh, Andrew, would you know whether or not Board of Adjustment will be?
Probably by February first.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would say maybe send an update, if it's, if it's gonna be canceled, then we'll keep our regular time, eight thirty breakfast. If they're not, then we'll do seven thirty breakfast.
Okay.
That work for folks?
And I had, for eight, eight for breakfast, nine thirty start of the meeting.
If BOA is not meeting?
Yeah.
So the overflow day be Friday now?
Yeah.
So the twentieth and the twenty-first.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
One of the things that we talked about last year, that maybe between yourself and the town manager. We discussed about having a strategic, uh, not review, but a strategic meeting between the boards of Mooresville and Troutman. Maybe we could look into it after our strategic uh, review meeting, getting together as a friendly. Uh, to get ideas from them and them maybe to get some ideas from us. I, I know, I, I was kind of excited when I heard it last year, we weren't able to put all the pieces together. But I think it would be great for certain individuals from the board and from our planning and zoning and our finance and chiefs maybe. To get together in a nicer atmosphere.
You reminded me of that a few weeks ago, I spoke with Mooresville manager Tracy Jerome. They, they have already established a date for their winter session, which I believe was in February. But, but they are excited and they, historically, they never did anything i- inside the town. So they took that from our playbook. But uh, she is asking so that we can better plan something that may be a little more dynamic. Uh, to check with you all if September-ish would work to, to have something where we each boards did our own thing. But then that afternoon, meet collectively and then go to dinner afterwards.
Okay. Cause I, I, I know that Councilman Jaroszynski, on myself and some other, uh, they have some great events at Liberty Park. And we have some great events here at our, at our park.
Yeah.
But maybe just to bounce some stuff off of them and just for us to become the sponge and get some ideas on how they do things there. I know Nick and Jerry, uh, and myself, uh, like a festival idea. And, and just that we could just kinda, just get some good ideas from, from them and then maybe get some ideas from us.
Sure. But unless you all say.
We don't have parades, I, I mean, we could help each other on that.
Unless you all say different directive wise, I was gonna continue talks with her to try to choose something in September, if that works with you all.
That makes sense to me, I mean, does that meet your?
Well, I mean, no, September's fine.
Okay, okay.
Uh, I'd like to hear what, I, I mean, what, what they got possibly in the fire uh, for twenty-five.
Yeah.
Maybe they'd like to hear what, what our plans are for twenty-five. You know, not that we're against each other, we're kinda joint forces to bounce ideas off each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any reason we're talking September and not something a little earlier?
Well, I think our town manager, good, came up with September, I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm just asking, you know.
I, I kinda would like to have something that we could maybe take and, and go towards to our budget, uh, you know, with an idea for a festival or something.
Yeah, we're talking about September, that's what, I'm very correct, September, we were kinda losing this.
I, I would, wouldn't mind seeing it sooner, but I, I, I mean, if, if our two managers have already talked and come up with a date for September, I mean, we can wait till then.
You're talking about hosting an event for September, or is, you're hosting a meeting?
No, hosting a meeting, it sounds like, am I correct, uh, Mr. White?
Say that again?
Hosting a meeting in September, right?
Yes, well, it, it may not be on-site, but it, it may be out of town depending on what theirs is. But it would be one of those one-day event to where, wherever that is, we would need to discuss our updates just within our own town. As they would, but then a time slot toward the end of their day, we would come together, council to commission. And you all discuss whatever publicly, and then after that, have dinner somewhere, was, was our general thoughts. Now, we can schedule it anyway, uh, anyhow you all prefer. But a, a lot of, that's the transition, some of the events you just talked about, that we, we have discussed. Councilman Jaroszynski and I went for the social district thing, thing that's gonna be discussed next week. Which kinda goes with what you're saying as far as festivals or, or these other things. I, I'm not aware of any town that staff handles those events, except us for when we do party at the park. It's certainly beneficial to discuss with numerous municipalities, but especially our neighbor, how they do things. But most all of them, as we learned in Elkin, have a nonprofit group that spearheads all of those things. They bring the idea to the town. The town then says, we like this festival, or uh, we already have something scheduled, you can't do it. To, to coordinate the details, because most of those still involve town staff. But the, whatever it is, is having to pay extra for that, whether it be police coverage, whether it be public works, whether it be parks and rec. That's where each event gets started. We're growing to a town to where events certainly could generate more activity within town. But we also need the buildings in town, just like some of these folks talking about, well, why don't you get this and why don't you get that? We, we, that's where we can talk to economic partners and say, how, how do we move forward with our public-private partnership to enhance our downtown? And/or to, to show that other areas are viable for an investor to come in and build buildings that will be both mixed-use residential and business. But to, to those of us that have lived here fifty years, we, we've seen some changing within Main Street downtown. But by and large, other than the disruption of the, uh, the railroad, and people complain about traffic now. They might, apparently didn't grow up here then, cause traffic was a lot worse. When we had the railroad and you had to stop at certain times when the, the rails was going by. But my point being, it is good to get the ideas, but also to reaffirm the fact that it is not town staff or you elected officials that's spending taxpayer dollars for these things to happen. It, it needs to be the buy-in of the business owners. Uh, you, you, there, there's a, say it, at one point in time, this town had five pizza places. And everybody's, oh my God, how, how many pizza places do you need? Well, the, the fact of the matter was, a lot of people's appetites different. All five were fine for some time, other than some extracurricular activities of two or three of them. I think they would've still been in business because people were driving from State School, Mooresville to get that kind of pie or pizza that was being produced. Uh, so sometimes having five pizza places, for example, that's not competition, it's telling people, come here and get your choice. So part of that is restaurants, the retail spaces, all of that that we're in the process of working on. As Wakefield's developed out, as Exit Forty-two develops out, we will have some more of these, but we still need to concentrate on downtown. And unfortunately, our budgets are not like the bigger towns to where they can just say, okay, here's ten million dollars, go do that. That's close to our working side of our budget for a whole year. So we don't have that kind of funds to throw out and say, hey, do it, and then they will come, or this old saying, build it, then they'll come. But, but I, I agree, uh, but just having it reaffirmed, whether we go to social media and our town webpages to explain, hey, we, we are looking at these things, but these are the groups that perform these functions in these locations.
Right. I mean, just for an example, like, like if we did have this strategic with Mooresville, one of the questions, I, I know I can pick up the phone and call a council or, or commissioner in Mooresville. But they have some big-name entertainment at, at their park, at Liberty Park, that probably costs a lot more than, than, uh. But I'd like to ask a question, say, hey, paying more for top-notch entertainment, does that bring in more income to your event? Because you have, not Joe the Banjo player, you have, you know, a top-notch entertainer, you know? I, I, I'd like, my question would be, does it offset it, you know?
Yeah, and, and is that a, that's a, that's a town-sponsored event?
Right.
Yeah.
And, and some of those questions I, I already can answer, just like Salisbury has done, Mooresville has done. One of the local businesses step up and sponsors those. And then the town makes money because they didn't have to pay for the top-notch singer to come in. A sponsor put that on.
No. I mean, whenever the two, I, I think Paul, whenever the two managers could get together, come with a date, whether it's in September, fine, or it's in March or April, fine.
And the only reason I was questioning that was, I, I was thinking, you were talking about getting into the budget, we would, we could something we can discuss sooner to get, you know, with the budget in July. And I thought maybe something that, we maybe wanna, cause I feel like if we wait until September, we're, we've already lost.
Now we're looking at twenty-sixth as a budget. I, I totally agree, but I, I've been leaving up to the two, I, I mean, again, would I like to go sooner? Yes, okay, but if it's September, those are the cards I dealt, I'll play them.
Okay.
And get blackjack.
Alright, we're good. Uh, next item is update on intersection improvements.
Thanks, I don't have a formal presentation, but I do have three intersections that I do wanna hit on, which I consider to be the three pinch points in town right now with congestion. And then I'll, I'll get into um, the crossing of US twenty-one that we were discussing last month, what I found from NC DOT. And then I'll open it up to any questions any of you may have, and I'll start with the Tally Street sidewalk. But uh, the first intersection I wanna talk about is the um, North Main Street, Old Mountain, Riddock Road. Uh, we did get a grant for that, just give a quick status update of that. I had a discussion today with the local programs manager, DO, um, NC DOT Division Twelve. Good news on this, sometime this week, we're gonna get approval to send out the letters of interest for a contractor to start the design and engineering work. So um, that's, that's good news, that process will probably be about a year. If you compare that to the other discretionary projects we have, we're about four years ahead of schedule as we are on those, so I think that's a good thing. So we are moving forward with that one. Um, the second one I wanted to touch on was Project R fifty-seven eleven, uh, the Flowerhouse Loop Houston Road intersection. Currently doing the utility relocation, and per NC DOT, this is an NC DOT sponsored project. Uh, they're looking at a let date of April twenty-second of this year. And what that means is they plan to have um, the bid for contracts for construction on that date. I imagine once they get the contract worked out, I don't think the actual construction work will take that long, I think it'll be a matter of months. So it's nice to see that one is moving forward, and then.
Andrew, I'm sorry, and before you, uh, talk about, what the, the first one down here at the, the old fore brothers, I still think in terms of that. Uh, you're saying that uh, engineering?
Yep, we have to.
Proposals, well, they go out for interest proposals for engineering, take about a year for that to come. And then letting of bids after that, uh, so we're probably talking maybe, what, a year and a half, two years before dirt's turned down there, is that interesting?
Um, it's probably gonna be longer than that, so we'll send out the, um, we'll send out this letters of interest, uh, staff and probably some, we'll get some people from outside to review criteria, whoever we get. Well, I, I imagine we'll get a handful of them. We'll pick, go through the negotiation about a contract with them. And then it'll probably take about a year, once that's done, for the process of the project to be engineered. And then after that, we'll have to get through the process of requiring any kind of right-of-way we might need. So um, we've talked about right-of-way with the Tally Street sidewalk, it, it's, it's really negotiations. You know, best-case scenario with right-of-way, you're probably looking at it an additional year, and that's the best case. Once that's done, then you can start your actual dirt moving and construction.
So, again, yes, early twenty-twenty-seven possibly, before dirt, before dirt's turned, is that what you're saying?
I think that would be optimistic, but I think it's possible.
So on the design of that intersection, DOT has showed us multiple designs.
Uh, the design that we got approved for is based, with the intersection down here, um, it was um, basically extended the turn lanes in all direction. It was adding what's called auxiliary, auxiliary through lanes going north-south on Main Street, which means you can keep, uh. The through lanes are meant to keep the traffic moving through the intersection, so you can have longer green times on the side streets. The slip lane coming out here, basically coming from Old Mountain, that would be eliminated, and you would have pedestrian improvements on every stage of that.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we were looking at.
Okay.
So, and hopefully, um, DOT reviewed that when we submitted the proposal to CARPO, and it didn't get shut down, so I'm hoping that's what we go with.
Okay. I just wanna be clear, I've seen the roundabouts there, I've seen the additional lanes and so forth, and yeah.
And, and one of the reasons why we're looking at those auxiliary through lanes is if um, the Main Street widening project ever does move forward. And they do four-lane coming down the hallway, we're not wasting money with them ripping up those lanes with something that's not useful. So they'll just extend those auxiliary through lanes throughout the whole extension of the project.
Okay.
So, so that was kind of the inspiration behind that design.
Okay. And you said, and you said Flowerhouse on construction.
Yeah, bids for construction, meaning um, DOT will start accepting bids for a contractor to start the construction, and that was, April twenty-second was the date I was given. So about three months from now, three and a half. And, and I just wanted to touch, we don't have any town or NC DOT sponsored improvements on this intersection, the Oswald Amity Main Street intersection. But uh, the Norman Creek subdivision, which was approved as Rocky Creek, as part of their TIA, they're required to add turn lanes at every segment of that intersection. So dirt's finally started to turn at that site. Um, I'm imagining, once they start adding infrastructure, we might start seeing those improvements. So I think with those three improvements, particularly the Flowerhouse and Oswald Amity, we could maybe alleviate that mess that's down there near Exit Forty-two. Getting any kind of turning traffic out of the through lane.
What was the third one you said?
It, it's, it's the Oswald Amity, uh, Parkdale, uh, North Main, South Main Street project.
Houston Road, you know, yeah, lining up the.
Yep.
Flowerhouse, Houston. Well now, nor the, uh, the uh, Rocky Creek folks, North Creek, whatever it is, uh, they're gonna be doing, they're at the Parksdale, Oswald, Amity, Oswald. The uh, Flowerhouse Loop, Houston Road, Atlanta, will be totally state-funded.
That's right, that, that's, that's funded, NC DOT has all the funding and they're.
That's the one that hopefully bid. That's the one that hopefully, mid, late this year, I will be liberal about that, say, that that will be dirt turns, so what we're going on. Now, the one at Parksdale, Amity Hill, at that, uh, Norwood, the Norwood, uh, Northern Creek, whatever, uh, is taking over. When do you think, again, dirt will start turning on that one roughly?
It it's really dependent on the developer, how quickly they move forward with developing that that piece of property, because that is a requirement of the developer on the TIA. So, it's going to really depend on when they start actually building in there with the infrastructure. But within the last three or four months, they've actually started doing quite a bit of landscaping and grading work, so I'm hoping that happens sooner rather than later.
Is there anything in the contract with them, or are the agreements, uh, that, uh, absolutely houses, they have to start work there at that intersection?
I I could not find anything in the agreements, um, that whole TIA was before my time here. But I don't think the DOT will issue them full access to the site until that, those improvements are in place.
And Andrew, the Flowerhouse intersection, um, we didn't have any developer input on that intersection, I thought it was.
No, that's a strictly NC DOT project, so we're just along for the ride with that one.
Okay.
Yep. And and I said, I did want to touch base, we had that discussion regarding, um, some kind of a crossing, uh, pedestrian crossing across Main Street. Uh, basically, Division Twelve told me they're not in favor of any kind of mid-block crossing, which would mean something, um, for instance, from here to the coffee shop or something. Uh, being that the road out here is thirty-five miles an hour, and it does carry quite a bit of traffic, uh, they don't, it's not something they would support, so I don't think we're, we should pursue anything with that. However, they did say that if we did want to have some kind of a pedestrian crossing across Main Street, right now, the best place to look at would probably be the stoplight here at Tally Street. And that might actually bleed into the sidewalk projects and be kind of a nice place, because you have the traffic light, we would just have to get some kind of a signalized pedestrian crossing, um, to be phased into that light.
Now, as I've just recently driven through Hickory, Stallings, Troutman, within the last two, not Troutman, Indian Trail, within the last two weeks, and Min Hill included, I've seen multiple pop-ups of Greenway crossings that are mid-block and also on roll rods.
Yep.
Uh, if this was relabeled as a Greenway crossing, because it would be connectivity to future sidewalk project down Tally Street that would connect to future Greenway, would that change the verbiage? And also, would that go along with reducing the speed limit to twenty-five? Because the odds of driving thirty-five down Main Street are like slim to none.
Um, that would probably be discussions with the division. Um, Min Hill and Indian Trail, those are all Division Ten, which there's a totally different mindset within that division of NC DOT, so I'm just sharing with the Division Twelve folks. Jared.
Okay, thank you.
If you're talking about crossing up here at the Tally Street, and we mentioned, we talked about this briefly, I think, maybe back in December, maybe November, I went all the way here in November, December. Uh, the crossing may be there at the ABC store, the Wal, what we call the Walgreens intersection. Uh, but that would maybe be in conjunction with the, uh, uh, Mountain Road, Main Street, Four Brothers area. Uh, is there anything in the works, you know, crossing along there at that, at that intersection?
I I think unless you get some kind of a, a stoplight at that location.
You got what?
A stoplight.
Okay, right, right.
Uh, the way I was discussing it with the DOT folks is, they don't feel that a crossing right there with no stop, with traffic moving north and south, is a safe movement.
I don't think people want it without some type of.
Well, yeah, yeah, I would, to be honest, that's. So, we're talking before some months to cross over, possibly have to go down the Tally Street, T-Sant to Main Street then.
With the way the infrastructure is.
And then the only other one being down there, and I guess it'll be crossing, you know, when they even, when they, uh, down at the, the big intersection, Mountain Road intersection.
That's right. Okay, now, with the Tally Street sidewalk project, I've got some good news. Um, I mentioned I did meet, uh, earlier this afternoon with the discretionary local programs manager with Division Twelve, and our right-of-way plans, as of today, have been approved, which means we are now free to get estimates regarding any kind of right-of-way we need to acquire. In looking at the project, it looks like, uh, it impacts about forty-seven properties with three streets, and twenty-five of those will have some kind of route of right-of-way that will have to be required. Um, varying degrees of square footage based on the property, obviously. But, um, I've contacted the consultant to start the estimates for us, so we can move forward to request the funds for the right-of-way. Fortunately, looking at those properties, at least one or two are town-owned, so I think we can negotiate with ourselves pretty well. So, hopefully, that process will start soon, and, um, it won't be, it won't be too much of a headache.
Who estimated time, was it going to ballpark figure of?
It it really depends on how nicely our citizens play with us.
Mm-hmm.
So, but it it could be six months, it could be, I don't want to say six years, but it could be a couple of years.
You mean, it's already been, how long?
Yeah, yeah.
Steve, I'm going back, as you're talking right-of-way, right-of-way at Old Mountain Road intersection, how many properties are we talking about, giving right-of-way there?
We'll we'll know that exact number once we get the design.
Okay.
So, it it's, um, it it really, because they they have like play in order to shift which way they want to go, because they're also kind of realigning that intersection, there is a little bit of a skew in it. Um, the plans we showed were coming kind of down more closer to the car wash and not affecting the gas station so much. Of course, once they get at the engineering, if they find stuff that maybe has to realign that, we'll know more at the ti- at that time.
You said car wash, you referring to the trash receptacle?
That's the one I'm referring to, yes.
I was just curious.
Andrew, and you may have addressed this while ago, I just didn't understand, uh, in terms, is the four lanes through this town that we were, what we were at, custom, getting ready to do years ago, several years ago, is that dead now? Or I know, we're still talking, what, twenty-thirty or something? Because, you know, we're talking about, you're doing this intersection down here at the Old Mountain Road, uh, obviously, they would need to do that in future, looking at four lanes, what, to bury them, I guess, to wake the elephants now up through town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, is that still, can, are they going to still do this in mind, it's a, uh, intersection modification, with that in mind, of doing the four lanes downtown, uh, as was proposed several years ago? Or are we just going to go with strategically placed turn lanes, so that, you know, we're not having people backed up like the infamous intersection there at the Advent Store?
That's right. So, the the two projects are separate, but we want to, the design we've got for this one, we're designing it so in case that four lane does come, it it's not going to, basically, we're not wasting our money on something that NC DOT is just going to rip up in ten years. But they're separate projects. The the STIP project out here to widen Main Street, it's still twenty-thirty earliest, and that's for design.
Yeah.
They call it post-year, meaning it's not in the STIP. Um, so, uh, I think our our CARPO members have probably seen that the funding for any kind of state projects is not exactly a positive place right now. So, I think two thousand thirty is ambitious, but it's still on the books, but still not scheduled to move forward anytime soon.
So, basically, we're looking at what, we're six years, seven years, eight years from now, we're looking at what it's going to be like then, even if we're looking at today still.
Unless, unless our state can find a.
Right.
Pot of gold under the rainbow.
And you're not talking, I mean, there's no discussion on right-of-way or engineering or any of this stuff on these other projects, so that's before you get to that.
I mean, twenty-thirty, as you said, I've been, you know, I was only, like, you know, at the place, right, and we're still talking about that, continue to talk about it. Uh, so, I I presume that's, that's something that's, again, I I I won't be around to see it, I'm sure, but it's, it's, it's.
Andrew, uh, due to all the devastation that happened in western North Carolina with the, with the roads, uh, I I mean, you just kind of hit, not hit the nail on the head, but how much now more because of the devastation is that NC DOT pushing things off? Because, let's be honest, Interstate Forty, uh, was a federal road, but but roads up there are going to get to priority, am I correct with that assumption?
Yeah, and we've gotten some updates at the CARPO meetings regarding that. But at this point in time, it's more, DOT's been more apt to share time they've had to spend with staff in order to start the, uh, basically inspection process. We don't even know what the damage is yet with the finances. And and of course, when you've got people stranded, those are going to be some priorities. So, I do see the potential for state-funded projects shifting and stuff that, you know, that's well ahead of our Main Street project.
So, we really haven't received the bad news yet, and I mean, it's a while away till everything is.
You know why, like, like Andrew said, at least the updates that CARPO is saying, they're still giving estimates to a certain extent. Part of what they have to do, some of this will come in, because the federal funding has been promised, but they've, the the state legislature will have to potentially appropriate a certain amount of money to then be reimbursed. And so, so, yeah, we don't know what that number looks like, but they've already appropriated some, but I think it's probably going to be, you know, some period of time. I think that the last number was over a thousand roads, not including the main, you know, highways there that still need to be touched in some form or fashion.
Thank you.
And and at one point, um, they had at least a hundred bridges that were out.
Totally washed away.
Yeah.
And those aren't cheap.
No, and and unfortunately, the temporary one, just a couple of weeks ago, got damaged.
Floated down the road, yeah.
They left.
Yeah.
Because it's so oddly, you know, because obviously, this is, what we're talking about the four lanes down here was, you know, from out of banks, you know, diverting money and so forth, and ensuing financial pressures on dock as a result, so we're just seeing really, I mean, I can't, uh, just, uh, sort of seem like every time we get close, something happens and pushes it out again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Get your.
Yep.
Good, thank you, Andrew.
Good. All right, next item is traffic concerns in Buryam Seasons, that's why it's not here. Um, website update, um, that's why it's not here. Um, let's take a five-minute break. We'll pause for five, just so we have an opportunity to come back before we go into the agenda. We'll cover the agenda for Thursday.
There you go.
We're taking five until you're ready. Yeah.
The sugar's getting me. Are we ready for the traffic discussion?
Yes.
Basically, I just need to take it off the agenda. I I will tell you all that I had sent out, due to several requests from citizens, two council members, they asked me to change traffic pattern in the town, that takes you all agreeing to to do that. I sent out an email to all the Buryam Seasons residents, expressing what the police chief and his officers had done, uh, the citizen complaints, and what the options were, whether to build, uh, traffic calming devices, speed bumps, if you will, or stop signs, and also, it would be at their cost. A couple of the citizens said, why our cost, we pay taxes, and why it would be their cost, and I confirmed with Andrew, when we approve development plans, there's a parking or traffic pattern that we approve. If you all so inclined to approve a change to that, that change is at the cost of those residents, not every other taxpayer in town, because they're the ones that's saying they don't like what's there, and that neighborhood's been in existence twenty-five-ish years now, somewhere in that neighborhood. And and while it has been an issue to a few, it has not been to a lot. Um, most of the responses I I got were, were, were do-nothing responses. The HOA, I don't know if he's outgoing remains, or a different president contacted me and said that their HOA fully expected to take an official vote through the HOA, and and I said, that'd be great, just send me the letter. I have, I have not received any communications from them, so I don't have anything to propose to you all as a suggestion, unless you say, tell us what the numbers were. The the numbers I had was, uh, only about twelve respond, and and, uh, ten of those was do-nothing. But the neighborhood has forty-some, forty-some residents out there?
No, ninety-one.
Ninety-one, and I only had ten to respond, so. I assumed the HOA, and it does make sense to me, that the HOA, they elect their own people to make decisions for them, even if they don't want to participate in their annual meeting, but if they send us a letter, and the president I spoke to understood, and but they lean toward stop signs, but I don't have anything official to request.
So, at one point, there was another neighborhood that asked for traffic calming devices. I understood that there had to be a certain percentage of the folks in the neighborhood to to request or approve before it came to the town, is that still the case, or?
It it, it depends on if it's an HOA-type neighborhood or not.
HOA neighborhood.
Uh, and and yes, their 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 HOA needs to handle that and bring it to us, as as, that's what they decided. If we, as a town, are conducting it, I I forget what the percentage was, but yes, we required more than fifty percent this, to go with whichever it was.
Because you're seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
All right, next item, website.
On the website, all that simply is, it it's not telling you all how wonderful and beautiful our website's going to be, it is to determine from you all what information you all want out there about yourselves. Uh, and reviewing our website to be updated, we saw that half council has a bio, other half does not. Uh, we we have differing, uh, some has, uh, personal phone numbers, some has, uh, town emails, some have neither. And and really up to you all, and it does not require a vote, per se, but you all need to let us know going forward how you want that to be. Uh, when we did fact-finding around the town, there were numerous that all that information is blocked. It just has the picture, their title, mayor, mayor pro town, council member, and how many years they've served, seems to actually be the most popular thing that's out there from communities. Uh, others have, uh, emails where you can click the email, but they don't tell anybody what the email is. Our our county commissioners are that way. If you click on there, it will allow you to send them an email, but you have no idea what their email is. Um, that's one of their ways of verifying that they're getting an email the legitimate way supposedly. Um, but it's really up to you all. Uh, I will say, um, we have had some years, and just like Councilman Jarzinski, we took his picture, uh, but yet, it does not look like some of you, other people's, uh, picture, and that's kind of bad. We will have a photographer this coming Tuesday and Thursday. They will be here from five o'clock PM to seven o'clock PM to take pictures for everyone that will go on the new website. So, our old pictures that we had, we can still use them, they just won't match, just saying.
No more face masks?
If you want to wear a face mask, you can.
I'm referring to a picture I had shared from the town website that showed a council meeting with face masks.
Oh, oh, um, but next Tuesday and Thursday, five PM to seven PM, there will be a date later, uh, but at this point, I I don't know what that will be. Uh, we are using, uh, the same photographer that made us all, well, made some of us look better than we are, and then some of you others didn't feel that way. But, uh, it's up to you all, the information that we put there, I do not have to know tonight or Thursday, just sometime within the next two to four weeks, we need to know how to do that. If you all decide to add your bios, then of course, we need a bio from everybody. If you decide to leave that off, that's fine, just tell us what you want to do.
Next Tuesday and Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Not this Tuesday.
Not this one, next one.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can we have the town residents submit suggested bios for each of us?
Oh, no. Oh, no, I think we would have some of that, uh, violations of rights stuff.
First five percent, you said.
Okay, next item is overview of the council meeting.
On our our coming agenda for Thursday, uh, On our, our coming agenda for Thursday, uh, general business, uh, under four, A, B, and C, uh, is the normal, uh, business at hand. C, I'm sorry, is not normal business, A and B is normal. C is discussing and setting a date for your strategic planning retreat. Uh, I did get a message from, uh, Jerry stating that nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first were not good for him as he, uh, was the sole parent available to take care of his kids. So I don't know if we need to go back and open that discussion back up, but nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first were not good for him. Uh, and of course, we still have time to share emails back and forth.
Yeah.
With dates and vote on this Thursday night, does not have to be done tonight. Uh, four D's, an update on the intersection improvements, Andrew will repeat what he did for those in attendance. Also, four E, discuss traffic at Buryam Seasons. If I do not have a letter bef- from them before then, we will, uh, I'm sorry, I put you in the whole wrong thing, Kim's over here letting me just talk away about agenda briefing and stuff.
I was gonna ask you what four E was.
Clerk's just letting me go down a river that didn't exist, I apologize, mayor and council.
That's why I always like to hear you talk.
Uh, Roman numeral six is the normal town business, uh, minutes from previous meetings. Roman numeral seven, recognition of employees. Um, we, we are trying to surprise one in particular, the other one, I think, will also be surprised. Uh, seven C, uh, is where our yearly audit comes in, Justin swears, the guy is gonna suggest that he gets a raise because he did such a great job, but we will see what he says in his audit report. Uh, Roman numeral eight, quarterly reports, Layton will be here from the ABC board. Nine's old business, ten's new business, and I'm not aware of any at this point. And, uh, that, that should be it. One thing I will say, the clerk and I both have been researching, uh, one of the council members asked, hey, attending different meetings and or watching different meetings, uh, uh, of how towns or counties do them. Uh, we have asked for policy, I'll be preparing you all a report on how that is done. Uh, there's at least one local one that you have to sign up previously, or you don't get to speak by four-thirty before their a- agenda that evening. If you're not signed up at that time, you don't get to speak. If you're gonna speak during, that's for public comments. It, and same goes for if you're speaking on, uh, uh, public hearings. If you intend on speaking one of those, you have to sign up before four-thirty. You can do so by phone or by, uh, email to the clerk who keeps a record of who that is. People speak in the order they register, that way it's not five for and five against, and they're lined up. It's whichever way they registered is how they speak. The consensus in our early, uh, review is everybody except for one claims to have three minutes. Uh, the email we've received today actually was, to me, kinda comical, because they, they think, but they really didn't show us anything, and they asked somebody and they said they did it one way, which has not been factual at the county commissioners meeting. So I, I really don't know what their official format is. I know they have a policy, but the person that communicated with us said they didn't think they did, so we're still working on that. But I will get that report to you all, did I misspeak? Okay, this one, for the record, because they, somebody always says, I, I, I'm the bad guy, but that's what they sent us.
So Kim's the bad guy.
It's Kim, yes. Uh, I'm just repeating what she's told me, it's all been scripted for four years. Um, but we'll get you all that report, nobody has asked that there be a change to the way we do it. We just wanted to give you all the information so that everybody knows what, what, what is normal these days, so to speak. But that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have something to add to my opening comments, um, about MLK events coming up. Um, and, and I just wanted to mention, of course, we have the one in Troutman, there's one in Mooresville, and there's one in Statesville that is not put on by the City of Statesville. A lot of people confuse that, that City of Statesville is putting that one on, it is an independent group. I'm actually the president, I had to make sure that's clear, because I'm the president of that group, and the City of Statesville does not fund that, we, we create our own funds, um, for that. Um, but that event is actually on, on Monday morning at seven AM, and Mooresville's is at nine AM, um, that same morning. And of course, Troutman's is on the seventeenth, that Friday. And I just encourage anybody who can go to any or all of those events to, um, support all of those events if you can.
Uh, and to add to what you said, council lady, uh, and I appreciate, and I forgot, it's here in my notes, and I just skipped a. Our MLK day will be on the fourth, uh, no, what, uh?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, Friday the seventeenth. Uh, over here at Katz, the public is invited to attend. Uh, there are others that we have asked for them to let us know if they're coming. Uh, is, has always been our theme, it's a day of service, uh, because Martin Luther King believed that each one of us as citizens should give back to our community in the different forms, whether that be teaching, whether that be watching your neighbor's child so that they can work, whether that's teaching somebody to read or write, or whether that's help your neighbor paint a house because they physically can't. There's all kinds of different ways of helping. We as a town have historically tried to pick projects within our community that will help beautify it, such as improving exit forty-two, was our hardest project, I think we did. Um, we still have some properties down there that, uh, Andrew and I spoke about, our state right-of-way properties. So the businesses do not have enough care to keep it clean, so we, we're going to go and, and handle that, if we're allowed with proper outdoor weather to work in. Uh, Emily is working some indoor, uh, activities. Uh, the, the food pantry is one of them that always needs our assistance, so she's trying to schedule both, uh, to where if we need to work indoor or if we work outdoor, but we absolutely hope that it's well attended. This year, uh, I just want to announce publicly, our, our speakers are our people. The mayor, uh, council lady Harris, and Sean from Parks and Rec Department, uh, with varied backgrounds and experiences, the mayor and, and council lady Harris, growing up here, attending schools here, but then the progression of you all's life and what it has been in our community. Uh, as we have all spoken before, our community has never been ashamed to be a community of firsts. And I think, uh, you all, Sean might not know that history, but being here as a new person within a year of how welcoming our community has been to him professionally and personally, and we're looking forward to hearing what you all have to say about your own experiences to, to let the community know. Um, there's a lot of our, our young children that look to various people in our community and, and wanna know if I can. And, uh, with, with the mayor having a, a pro athlete in the family and being the mayor of the town, I'm sure, there's all kinds of things. He, with you having, uh, school-aged children but still being successful in your own right, I, I think the community would be ecstatic to hear what you all have to say.
Thank you.
All right, um, nothing else, next item is closed session pursuant to the North Com General Statute, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eight six, and one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eight three. One personnel matter and two, the consultant attorney, who you need in the room?
Our attorney, clerk, and elected officials.
Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And then motion passed. Thank you.